Ready? Call the meeting order of Tuesday, May 28th for the County Board and rise and close the meeting.
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I tried to.
I heard you.
Thank you.
But I didn't hear the head.
Um, roll call. Ready?
(inaudible). And he has my reasons.
Okay.
You have a reason.
Twenty present, one absent with permission, of course. Motion, presentation of the agenda.
So moved.
Mark, seconded by Chuck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is passed. Public, is there a correspondence? We got a letter in your packet, and then there's also a letter from me that explains the per diems for the county board conference coming up. Normally, we go there on Sunday. This time, the committee made a decision that you didn't have to get there till Monday morning at 11 o'clock, so you could leave Monday morning and stay over one night, Monday night, and that would be the extent of the convention. Has anybody got any questions on that? And then in your packet is a letter on some land that is gonna be by the DNR into Conservancy, I guess would be the right word. Any questions? Public comment?
Wait a minute, Dan.
Oh, what?
One thing on correspondence.
Yes, go ahead.
There was a piece on the desk of everybody from the Public Health Department on Mental Health Awareness Month, which came out of the Community Needs Assessment. Committee formed just on mental health and suicide prevention, and put together a guide, similar to the senior guide that's put together by the Senior Resource Center, on resources available for mental health, and the guide is back on the table if anybody'd like a copy, and if we run out, we can contact the Health Department and get more.
Okay. Does anybody got any questions on it? If not, we'll go to public comment.
Good morning. I'm Victoria Serenich. I live in Sebastopol, and I'm here as an observer for the League of Women Voters. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, we won't have to have supervisor's response. We have a special report this morning from the Door County Visitors Bureau. Jack Moneypenney, Jack, you can come to the podium.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to thank you for giving me a little bit of time today. I haven't been here to visit you in probably a couple, two or three years, actually. We'd like to get here a little more often, just to give you an idea of what we're up to and what we're working on at the Door County Visitor Bureau. You know, it's hard to believe it's been six years this month that Room Tax was enacted in Door County. And as many of you know, lots of ups and downs those first couple of years, a lot of learning curve along the way. You know, but I can honestly tell you that if the Door County Tourism Zone folks had not worked as hard as they worked those first couple of years, there is no way we would nearly be anywhere near we are right now in collections, in enforcement, in distribution. It just really, they did a yeoman's job those first couple of years, which have positioned us today to be able to do what we do. You know, we are the marketing entity that the TZC Tourism Zone Commission contracts with. They can contract one entity for the marketing of the county. In additions to the marketing dollars generated from Room Tax, we also run a parallel budget from our membership side. So we run two parallel budgets continuously all year long. One side is only marketing dollars to the tourism zone, the other side is our membership budget, which is derived from dues, ad sales in our visitor guide, some co-op marketing dollars from our members. And the reason this is important is because everything we do is assigned one side or the other, and many of them are split, depending on the percentage we feel fits into each category. So it's just always good to remember that. It's about a two to one ratio. The Room Tax is about $2 million, and all said and done, our membership side's about $1 million in revenue at the end of the day. There are 13 of us, including myself, at the Visitor Bureau, and as a point of reference, prior to Room Tax, when it was the Chamber. And by the way, I used to get upset when people called it the Chamber, but this year, we started our 123rd year of continual operation. So it was the Chamber for about 110 years, so you can call it the Chamber, I decided. But as a point of reference, today, we have 13 full-time employees, including myself. Or, we have 13 today, and prior to Room Tax, we had 12 full-time employees at the Bureau. So we have not grown our staff tremendously. We have had changes in our staff, obviously, and I think we have better-positioned people at the Bureau that can multitask and do different jobs for us. Each year, we develop an integrated marketing plan that utilizes traditional media as well as online opportunities. We look for expanded opportunities to tell our message to travelers. In 2012, the Door County Visitor Bureau hired a custom tourism marketing research company called DK Shiftland. About every five years, we want to go out and make sure that we are talking or putting our message together and aiming our arrow at the correct demographics out there. They embarked on a year-long traveler motivation survey done by season for Door County. The survey included visitors and non-visitors from Wisconsin excluding Door County, Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan. This piece, which you should have at your place setting, whoops, this one here, is an overview of a 78-page online study. If you turn this over on the back, it says for the complete 78-page study, and there's a bit.ly URL. If you enter that URL into your computer, you'll be accessed to the whole 78 pages of data. Seasoned by season, visitors, non-visitor responses, their verbatim responses. This is just kind of an overview piece that we put together for our Tourism Breakfast and for our Board of Directors and for a few other groups in town, and you are one of those groups. So take a look at this, and if you're interested in the full study on why people visit, take a look at that. Our demographics, there's a couple of things we learned from this study. The first is that our demographics have not changed tremendously. We are still talking to a 35- to 54-year-old audience. Primarily, the female makes the travel decisions in the household. They have a combined household income of $70,000 or more, and about three-quarters of our visitors come to Door County without children. The other thing that we learned from this study is of the people who do not visit Door County in those areas that were surveyed, 52 percent of them said they don't visit Door County because they don't know anything about Door County. So when you think about that, it's kind of amazing to me. Now, I know we've only scratched the surface down in Chicago, but we'll get to that in a few minutes. This year, I think we put together a really good television buy down in the Chicago Land area. It's over $100,000 TV buy going into those northern suburb households for about an eight-to-10 week buy. Lot of repetition of the message. What we would like to do today is show you a few things on here, but first, before we go any farther, we would really like to thank you for the resolution and proclamation for National Tour and Travel this year that the County Board, all of you, put together for us. You know, it seems like a small gesture when you see your list of resolutions, but at the end of the day, I have to tell you, there are groups all over this state, my counterparts, who their city folks, their county folks, have no clue about tourism, doesn't understand how it affects them, and would never get that resolution passed. And we just want you to know how much we appreciated that you took that time to declare that week National Tour and Travel Week. During National Travel and Tourism Week, which was May 4th through the 12th, it's always that second full week in May, we received our county statistics from the state. Of those statistics, we climbed to one spot, to the seventh position. So out of 72 counties in Door County, we were the seventh for visitor spending. Last year, we were the eighth. We flip-flop. What happens with Brown County is if the Packers go to the playoffs, they immediately move up a slot, because they get that much income from a playoff game. So we're up to slot seven, which is pretty darn good, when you think of 72 counties. The big guys are ahead of us, of course, Milwaukee County, Dane County, those groups, because they have more hotel rooms, and they're open year-round, heavy traffic. Our visitor spending in 2012 increased by 6.6 percent, or $17.8 million. The reason I feel so confident in these numbers is we are the only county in the state that can tell you exactly how many rooms were available, exactly how many rooms were occupied, exactly what the ADR was, both by month and for an average for the year. No other county can do this in the state. So our numbers are golden. When we sent our numbers to the survey, to the company Tourism Economics, they're located out east, it's who the state uses to put the numbers together, they said they always look forward to ours, because they can run our numbers in 10 minutes. They said they plug our numbers in, and out comes our spend at the end, and they said it is the most accurate of any county, because they know the numbers are real. So again, there we are, saying that we increased $17.8 million in customer spending last year. We've seen continued growth year over year, not only in visitor spending, but Room Tax collections, state and local taxes generated also. There's two other printed pieces for you today that I brought, if I can just find them. This is kind of a one-page piece, and it's kind of a quick reference. Looks at the national, state, and Door County in different categories, and on the back, it shows you four years of visitor spending, state and local tax collections, and Room Tax collections in Door County. The reason we started in 2009, as many of you know, May of 2007 is when Room Tax collections began, but it took us until January of 2009 to get all 19 of the communities on board. To us, that was tremendously important. I never want to have to say, "We represent all of Door County except a specific community." We can truly say we go out and represent and market all of Door County from the southern gateway to the tip of the island, and we do that proudly with everyone joining in our tourism banner. Actually, I wanted to have a unification parade from the southern door to the top, but nobody would get in line with me, so... Although, this weekend, there was a parade. Thank you, those who got that. It wasn't really a parade, but there were a lot of cars lined up for one. I would like to briefly discuss the growth of Room Tax and some other key indicators with you now. So cross your fingers and see if this works, and it's not Jill's doing, it's ours. We brought it on a... So here is your Travel and Tourism Week proclamation. Thank you. We have it actually framed, hanging in the lobby at the office. These are the five-year reviews. This chart can be found in this newspaper insert, and this was the other piece. You all should have received this in your home. This is the third year that we've gone into every household in Door County to try to help people understand the power and value of tourism in Door County. There were a lot of residents, I think that now finally understand that if tourism went away tomorrow, so would their quality of life. Most of the performing arts, a lot of the restaurants, a lot of everything would just disappear if the tourists disappeared. So really, tourism gives us a quality of life, and it is very powerful in this county. So we will continue to do this year over year, because we think it's important to try to get into every household at least once and talk to people about tourism. So if you could take a look at this piece here, it shows, again, 2009 being the base year, when everybody was in the zone. Over those four years, we've seen Room Tax collections increase about $450,000. The 30 percent of each dollar that goes back to the municipality has increased $134,000-plus. Room occupancy has gone up 3.09 percent. The average daily rate has gone up $10, from 124 to 134 over the last 40 years. The total room revenues have increased $9.2 million over the last four years. And county half-percent sales tax has gone up $178,300, which, when you do the multipliers, that equates to $35,660,000 in additional purchasing of goods and services in Door County. And we understand this number includes the residents. However, there is a cycle to life. Residents buy cars every so many years, so when you take all of that and level the playing field and say, "So much of this every year are residents buying appliances, or buying a car, or a big, major purchase," then the rest of this you see is growth directly tied back to occupancy and Room Tax and more increased business in Door County. Let's see where I'm at now. I'm sorry, I just want to... These are the pieces that you have in front of you today. As we said, visitor spending increased $17 million. This is the four years in a bar graph form, showing the growth. And this is directly tied to Room Tax, quite honestly. At the end of the day, if Room Tax had not been enacted in 2007, I shudder to think how many businesses would have been shuttered after 2007 and '08, but we've seen great growth over the last four years. Room Tax themselves has increased $230,000 just year over year. State and local taxes, $1.2 million. Okay. This is where we're gonna go into some of the highlights. So this next part, less than three minutes. So if this works, enjoy the show. This is some of our marketing, our ads that have gone out, our new website, our niche microsites that we've developed. The music's not working, but that's okay. This is our luxury print collection. We have four of these digital booklets in the online Midwest Living this year. These are our microsites, Silent Sports, Arts and Cultures. These are landing pages on our website, where if somebody's looking for a specific niche, they can go in there and get all the information they're looking for. Group is Motor Coach. This year, we hired six local folks insiders for blogging, tweeting, and posting on our Facebook and their Twitter accounts. They represent the niche markets we just looked at. This is our new interactive e-newsletter. It's a stacker, no matter what you're on, it'll stack to fit the screen. Here's our 2013 Visitor Guide. Our Facebook numbers are well over 13,000 by now. Now, Jill, is it not possible to get audio?
Um, no.
Okay. So you'll see the two... Okay. You'll see the two television spots. The first one is the 30-second spot. Unfortunately, you're not gonna hear the audio, and the next one is the 15-second spot. The 15-second spot, 30-second spot runs in Chicago and Milwaukee. It's $100,000 buy in Chicago, $40,000 buy in Milwaukee. The 15-second spot is a co-op spot, and a combination of the 30s and 15, running Green Bay and the Fox Cities with our partners. So anybody who signed up for co-op TV, they put together a 15-second spot on their business, and it linked together. We opened for them, we tee up the ball, and then they come in the last 15 seconds and talk about their business. And then the last thing that you won't hear at all is the radio in Madison this year, which was a $40,000 buy. We've not gone into Madison yet. It's just been tough for us to do that. But this year, with the increased growth of Room Tax and marketing dollars, we were able to step into the Madison market and put together, and actually, it's the audio, unfortunately, you can't hear, from the television spot that worked perfect, but it's drive time, mornings and afternoons, and we're hoping people are stuck on the Belt Line and listening to the message about Door County. So here's a look at the two TV commercials, we'll skip by that, and then I think we're just about done. Not getting it at all, are we? All right. Well, I hope you see them at some point. I apologize, folks. Just...
Here, there you go.
Oh, but we didn't see the...
I've just seen the title.
All right, let's just skip through these. I don't want to waste your time. I'm sorry. Here's the radio spot in the markets in Madison. It was through Clear Channel, and this is the reach that we got in the Madison market with that commercial. So the reach gave us about a million listeners over the span of six weeks that heard the So public relations, real quick, through our public relations department, we use a group called Geiger and Associates for Public Relations. They bring in travel writers. We have eight press trips scheduled for this year, and to date, we've had over 400 travel writers come through Door County. The ones that are remaining at this point, we actually have quite a few. We have June, two in June, one in July, one in August, one in September, and one in October. The last four are smaller, more niche-market themed for writers, Silent Sports magazine-type writers, visual and performing arts-type publications, food and wine publications, and then a fall-themed, smaller press tour. These are some of the highlights that we got the front cover of this past year. So Minnesota Monthly, Midwest Traveler, Wisconsin Journeys, Interval World Fall Escapes. Our earned media cover, since the program began in 2007, that was the first year we used Geiger and Associates, we've had 887 articles generated from those travel writers being here, $7.8 million in ad value. So if we had to go out and buy this equal space through advertising, it would have cost us $7.8 million. And I believe the date, we've just spent just over $1 million on this program, out of Room Tax dollars. So we're getting a great return on our investment. There've been 225 million impressions, and 442 journalists have visited Door County. And what's nice is, we keep getting calls back that say, "I was there in the fall, and my editor wants me to do a spring article on Door County. Can I either shoot back up, or can you send me images? I know the basic information. Can you get me some spring images to use in my next story?" This is a new initiative this year. It's called Capture Door County Photo Contest, and this is out on our social media, and if any of you want to go to capturedoorcounty.com and you're a photographer, you can actually sign up and upload your photos. You can then choose to say, "Go ahead and use them. If you like my photo well enough, you can use it," or, "No, you can't use my photo, but you can look at it and judge it for its quality." To date, we've had, I believe, about 5,000 photographs uploaded in the first quarter of the year. Of that 5,000 photographs, 66 percent of them have said we can use them if we would like to, and 66 percent of them are of good enough quality that we may use them. At the end of the, in every month, there's a different contest. So one month, it's sunrises and sunsets. Another month, like, I think this month, it's blossoms. And what'll happen is, just between Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving, a coffee table book will come out, like a 300-page coffee table book, big, beautiful, bound book, with these photographs, the winning photographs. So they will pick the top 300 photographs to be in this coffee table book, and it will be available. We will not sell them. You can order one personally for yourself, or there'll be businesses that can purchase them to sell in their shops in Door County or their businesses, so... But all of these photos will be available. I will tell you, some of the shots, I just look at them, and I'm thinking, "Wow, and I get to live here." Seriously, it is amazing, some of these photographs. Here we go, a hard-bound coffee table book. And that's it. I won't take any more of your time today. I have a couple minutes, if anybody has a question? Yes?
Just last night, I saw the aerial shot, they fly around the Coney.
Yes.
That was very impressive. It looked very nice.
Thank you. That's what our commercial was primarily made up, was the aerial footage, is what we built our commercial out of. There were 12 hours of aerial filming that we had done. That was lowered to five and a half minutes, condensed, that's on YouTube, and actually, you can go to YouTube and look for Door County, and you'll see both the commercial and the five-minute version, and then it was cut to a 30-second. But truly, I've had people look at it and think, "Wow, water, water everywhere." And really, that's what we are. Yes?
I'd like to, and I think most of you know I'm an innkeeper in Ephraim, and I'd like to endorse what Jack has told us today, and I can give you nothing but thumbs up for his operation. It's changed so much recently. I think one thing that was not self-evident, that you didn't fail to bring up, and it's not a criticism, but the room occupancy rate is about 40 percent in Door County. My toaster costs the same as the toaster in the Dells, my toilets cost the same. Everything costs me the same up here, but I only have a short window to make my money. If you go to other areas that have tourism, they're open 365 days out of the year. Probably the most obvious one would be something like Disneyland, where they keep the people packed in there year-round. And so as an innkeeper in Door County, we're faced with a lot of problems that other areas don't have, and so support from this county, support from the Chamber, is very vital to innkeepers up here. So I hope you kind of keep that in mind when tourism subjects come up, that we're up against a different kind of battle than, say, like the Dells, who are open with water parks and stuff on a year-round basis, so, thanks.
There was no more guests, sir.
Many of us in this room, and in Sturgeon Bay and Door County, were down at legislative days, and I, and I'm sure my colleagues, made sure that we advised the lawmakers and/or their staff of how important Door County is, and that last year alone, bringing in $289 million in visitor revenue, and how Door County ranks number seven, and how important Door County is to the state's big puzzle. So, and for the public listening, we made sure that all of the offices we visited at legislative days, that we advised them of this information.
Thank you. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Does a store like Walmart belong to the Visitors Bureau?
Actually, they do.
As a membership?
Actually, they do. They have a membership there. Yes.
Just curious about that. Just curious about that. A lot of times, the small businesses end up paying quite a bit of money, and...
Actually, all memberships are the same.
They're all the same now?
They're all the same now. It's not based on number of seats in your restaurant or number of beds in your facility. It used to be quite different. It was like $108 per room and so much per chair in your restaurant. Now, it's a flat $375 a year, so just over $1 a day.
Whether you're a Walmart or you're Hugh Mulligan, it's the same.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Anybody else got any questions?
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have a report for the Administrator, but first, I'd like to show you people, this issue of Door Magazine this month, has got an article on Maureen.
Oh, good.
I was taken aback by one of her quotes, though, and I'll read it. "I believe counties are the most interesting services provisioned in government. It's close to the people, and yet you literally, nine times out of 10, fill A to Z. I haven't found a Z in Door County, and I think Zipper would be one of the very prime candidates for a Z."
Oh, that's right. There you go. Thank you. That's right. I forgot the O's to Zipper. Thank you. Of course, this is the monthly report, and I think going forward, if it's okay with you, I'd like to begin giving this to you both in writing and orally at the County Board level. As you all know, about a month or so ago, we adopted health insurance changes that will affect our employees beginning January 1, 2014. And of course, we also adopted the first piece of the changing of the work rules and work conditions with the employee handbook. The next two pieces, the staff will, and of course, you're involved in this, will begin the next two phases of this, which is the compensation study. At present, it's about a five-phase compensation study. Right now, the department heads are reviewing with the Human Resources Director the 200 or so job descriptions. The second phase of that is to do an internal equity analysis. Your management team will be performing that internal equity analysis. That team consists of myself, Corporation Counsel, Finance Director, and Human Resources Director. Then, we will perform an external market analysis. The consultant will be doing that, Whipfley. In your packets, you all had a PowerPoint presentation that Whipfley provided to the Administrative Committee, so please take a look at that. It answers a lot of the questions that may be out there by yourself or by our staff. This is indeed posted to the website, so anyone wishing to take a look at how this will be conducted through the remainder of the year, feel free to do so. The next phase, of course, is to design a salary structure and do something called a comparative ratio analysis. That's also described in that PowerPoint presentation. And then finally, to develop administrative guidelines for implementation of the compensation study. This will be coming before you in October for your review and hopefully approval, whatever action you should choose to take with this item beginning in, or closing in October of this year. I think I said April. April, we did, of course, the health insurance and the employee handbook. The next piece is the administrative manual. As I mentioned, about a month or so ago, we had the employee handbook, that was the macro-level piece. The administrative manual is the micro-level piece. It is the document that will include hours of work, working conditions, so that piece is underway as well. The administrative manual will begin with listening sessions for the employees. I'll be conducting about six of those throughout the month of July. Three will be held here in the Government Center, two at our courthouse, our new, what do we call it?
Justice.
Thank you. Justice Center. I'm obviously old-school, call it a courthouse, but the Justice Center. Two will be conducted at the Justice Center, and then one finally at the Highway Shop. These are listening sessions. So I will have an opportunity to listen to the employees. As you recall, when you were kind enough to appoint me to this position, I quoted an ancient Greek philosopher, where we have two ears and one mouth, so that we may listen twice as much as we speak. My intent during those six listening sessions is to do that. Yes, Supervisor Zipper, I will not be speaking, I will be listening. That's my intent at those meetings. And then, of course, we will take what we learn and put that into the administrative manual. And my intent is that your department heads will have a review of that in July, and then through the various committees in August. So that's the most up-to-date items, the items that will impact us greatly as of January 1, 2014. If there's any questions? It's up to you.
Susan?
I have a comment, and I think two questions, although probably more questions, but maybe I can limit it. First, a comment. I applaud you and whoever thought of the idea of the listening sessions. I think that's a good way to begin. I strongly urge that the Executive Committee, and particularly Kelly, I guess, and the department heads, take that a step further then, and as they set up the administrative manual, you know, the structure that's going to govern how we deliver services and how we manage our employees, that we build into that processes and structures that allow for meaningful and real and regular opportunities for employees to have input into how the work of the county is done. When we hire our employees, we look for people with the best skills and the best knowledge and the best experience and expertise, and I think we really need to remember that that's a value. We need to value those things. And so, for the county to deliver the best product possible, it's important that all the stakeholders who deliver that product have an opportunity for collaboration and for, you know, sharing of ideas and teamwork and so on. So I really think it's important that those structures be put in there as part of how we do business on a day-to-day basis. I mean, I'm saying this not just because it's the nice thing to do, although it is, and I'm not just saying it because it's the right thing to do, although it is. I also am saying it because I think it's the smart thing to do. I think the management studies that have been done of businesses show that when employees have a stake in how things are done, the businesses work better. So that's my comment. I'm wondering if you could elaborate on the committees that are going to look at these things. It's mentioned in there. I don't know if that means admin, or if it means the oversight committees for the different departments?
I think we need to discuss with the department heads how to best approach that. Of course, it's up to the committee chair. Any committee chair desiring to schedule this can. I think the vision, from my perspective as the Administrator, I would be looking at the bigger departments. Obviously, that would be Human Services Board, that would be Highway Committee. So those two committees in particular. Administrative Committee certainly is the vehicle through which most of what we do at at least that higher-level management team that I spoke of. The Corporation Counsel and the Human Resources Director both answer to the Administrative Committee. I could see us going to Finance Committee possibly, because I don't believe in 2014 it would be wise to budget some of the savings that we will achieve, but they will be, there will be opportunities into the future, into the 2015 budget, about how much overtime is going to change with the loss of those labor agreements. Overtime is one of those easy ones for us all to imagine. With Fair Labor Standards Act, overtime begins at 40 hours, as opposed to some of the bargaining, collective bargaining agreements where overtime might begin at 8. So there are going to be some opportunities for savings, so I could see this being an item that might end up at Finance Committee as well. But that, beyond those four committees that I've named, it's up to the individual committee chairs to determine if they would like to schedule it. But the bigger, I think, the bigger departments are going to see the most impact with the loss of those collective bargaining agreements. Now, as I say that, remember, the paramedics will still be collectively bargaining, so the EMS Committee will still have a collective bargaining agreement, but where that collective bargaining agreement would be silent is where the administrative manual and employee handbook will kick in. The other piece that, the other group that will continue to collectively bargain on work rules would be the deputy sheriffs. So I don't know if the committee would choose, I'm looking at the chairman, to schedule this. It's entirely their decision rather than mine. And of course, we still may end up with those four units that are going, their work rules are going to end at the end of this year, but they still might be collectively bargaining base wages. So it's just all of those other things that they will not be able to. So as I say that four are coming to an end, they still may elect to continue, but they will only be bargaining base wages. And then, that the important key to the administrative manual, the hours of operation, the overtime, working conditions, callback pay, all of those things will be up to you.
Okay. Is it appropriate to ask a question about the specifics of the compensation study? I mean, I sat at, I think it was admin where you heard this presentation, but I have to confess, I can't remember how the internal equity analysis works, and whether it's done by county staff or whether it's done by our consultant.
The internal equity, as part of the piece that's in your...
Right.
It does discuss the internal equity analysis. It would be performed by that, it's called a compensation committee in here. That compensation committee would be made up of the Corporation Counsel, Finance Director, Human Resources Director, and Administrator. So they would be looking at that internal equity analysis and performing something called a, I'm new to this too, so I'll...
Is it a formula or something?
Yes, it is. It's an internal equity analysis utilizing a point factor evaluation method, and that is detailed in the PowerPoint that was attached to the monthly report, and that's posted to the website. So we'll be learning about that from, we'll be going through a training session with our consultant on what to look for as we learn about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Biz?
On your listening sessions, I assume they're going to be during working hours?
Yes.
And will a department head allow all those employees that want to attend, to attend, even though there's work to do? Will all the employees that want to attend a listening session be able to do it?
Yes.
So the...
Without a disruption in service. That's going to, we're going to talk about this...
So the department head is going to tell everybody about this, and if you want to be there, you can be there?
Yes. There's going, we're doing a newsletter. I'd hope to get that out to you, and I'd hope to, that be part of this discussion today, but the newsletter will be out probably by next week, June 1, and it will detail the listening sessions. We're going to be talking about this tomorrow at a department head meeting, and yes, without a disruption in service. That's why there's so many, is to give every employee an opportunity to come. We figure with six of them, we should cover it with vacations and everything else, so. But the key is to not, no disruption in service. But I'll leave that up to the individual supervisors and department heads. And no one has to use PTO or vacation time. This is part of how we operate, and it's, as was stated already, our employees, we're nothing without them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's it? Okay, we'll go to the approval of the minutes of April 16th and April 30th. Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Biz, seconded by Richard Haynes. Are there any corrections, additions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. We're going to deviate from the agenda a little bit. We're going to go down to page 42, the intergovernmental agreement with the Sturgeon Bay School District. Joe is back there? Or he was?
He just stepped out.
He just stepped out. Is he coming back? Eric, go and see him. I was going to save him some time.
Getting back to work.
Where's your school?
I'm waiting to see who I can award it to.
I was going to jump down the agenda to save you some time. Grant, you want to explain this intergovernmental agreement?
Yeah, very briefly. The Door County Information Systems Department has been in discussion with the Sturgeon Bay School District to provide the services that are mentioned in the intergovernmental agreement that was handed out this morning. I apologize for it coming to you late, but this came to my attention relatively late in the game. I forwarded a copy of this to District Administrator Studing late last week, and he got back to me at about 7 o'clock this morning and said it was okay. What we are lacking is, described in the agreement as Exhibit A, or Addendum A, and that is the document that will outline the technical services being provided by Door County Information Systems Department to the school district to support its information systems. What we are asking today is that that be approved without Addendum A, and that Addendum A be worked out between the Information Systems Department and the district, and reviewed and approved by the Oversight Committee. The reason being that this is a new relationship, and the Information Systems Department and the school district will be feeling their way along as this goes forward. And at this point in time, I think both the school district and the Information Systems Department have a good general idea of the services that will be required, but before that's reduced to writing, they need to sit down and talk a little bit more.
Do we have to add anything to the resolution that's before us? No?
I don't think so. It's just with that, the resolution will be adopted with that understanding.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion? We'll get it on the floor then. Motion by Joe Garland, seconded by Mark Miller. Lilo, you got a question?
Just making sure that we had somewhere in the agreement or the resolution, the fact that we were going to have a review of that service before the expiration of the first year, to see if it was, if we were still going to continue that.
That was your motion on the Administrative Committee, wasn't it? That passed, that would be reviewed in one year. Do we have to have that in that document, or is that under...
It's in paragraph four in the second paragraph, and I tied it to the annual fee. What that second paragraph recognizes along the lines of what I said before is that this is an estimated cost, the cost being $36,400 the first year, and that the annual fee can be influenced by a number of factors, and it will be reviewed and may be adjusted by mutual agreement of the parties on an annual basis. And if the parties can't agree on an adjustment to the annual fee, the agreement may be terminated by either party upon 45 days' written notice.
Okay. Any other questions? Joe?
Yeah, I have two questions on this. Number one, do we have the staffing on board to support this without bringing new people on board?
I guess we could bring Tim Alman up to the mic to answer that. I see him shaking his head, doesn't tell you which way, though.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I guess, number two, is it just because of the proximity of the school to us that this works with them, or is this open to other school districts?
There's two things that make this work for us, and the first is that they are fiber-optically connected to us as a result of the charter agreement wayback in 2002. Proximity is good, but Maureen and I have had this talk about Pandora's Box, and the school districts looking at probably collapsing. They aren't the only school district that's talked to us about services. Sebastopol and Southern Door have come to us as well. And without a high-speed connection to us, it doesn't work. So, and we've had discussions with you both there as well.
Hugh?
This represents, I assume, some sort of tax savings for the expenses for the school district.
I'd have to have Joe talk to that, but again, not trying to put words in his mouth, he is basically trying to get the same level of support that he has currently today with two people. And again, we are basically doing the backend infrastructure support, the Ethernet switching, everything on the wire out to the wall plate, and then he's looking to get in another tech to do client installs, projector installs, software installs out at the client. The big differentiator that happened is that they will not be calling us direct. They are going to clear out the call, or the technical support call, with their own staff first, and if they determine that it's something that needs to have network support, then they're going to forward it over to us. So, that lowered our requirements substantially, so. So, did I answer that right?
Yep.
We're actually going to increase our department by one-third with this. Instead of having two people, we'll actually have 2.3 people. I don't think we're any different than the county. We keep growing our technology needs, our end users, more and more devices, and to support it, we need more help. And we have a retirement, so the timing was right for us. Now, in the future, what I would see as the potential savings for the taxpayers are, how many phone servers should this taxpayers pay for in Door County? If you could get by with one for every entity, wouldn't that be the smartest thing for us to do? And I think those are the future potentials with this partnership. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But if we don't try it, we never know what potentials we have to save the taxpayers, whether they're, they're all Door County taxpayers. That's what makes our school districts unique. If I was in Clintonville like I was before I came here, I'd have to deal with three counties. We could never even have this conversation. We have a unique opportunity, and it may work. And the, and I like the agreement, it's written, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But then we can all look at our taxpayers and the IAS, we tried to do the best that we could with efficiencies, and because of the fiber connection right now for us, it's a golden opportunity. You know, I, for me, it's layman's term. I need help from the wall backwards. What I have to hire more staff from is the wall out to my end users, and that's all those devices that we've added over the years. So, in the end, it's not gonna be a tax savings for us right now, but I could see potentially as we grow this partnership, there could be big tax savings. Could be one server farm. And I would hope every school, every Door County, and the city, and everybody, if that's what saves the taxpayer. That's the potential we have here.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions? If not, we'll go to our voter board and vote it up or vote it down. Ready? That is passed on a vote of 20, yes, and one absent. We're gonna skip right down to the ordinances. I don't know if this has anything to do with Joe, but he's here. The amendment to chapter 3123, Door County Code Compensatory, School Attendance Ordinance. Grant, you want to explain that one?
Even quicker, the state statute that pertains to compulsory school attendance changed. We are therefore required, because our ordinance is based strictly on the state statute, to amend our ordinance. What this allows is another arrow in the law enforcement quiver. They are not obligated to refer the case to the district attorney's office for a long-form complaint. They have the option of issuing a citation if they deem that to be appropriate. So, that's why it's here today.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve that? Susan, and seconded by Biz. Are there any questions? If not, I will go to the voter board. Ready?
You want, go.
Hey, it's on the right color.
There you go.
That is passed 20, yes, one absent. Next item is the resolution in memorandum of Kita Steves. Kenny, you want to read that and make a motion?
Sure. You want the motion first or read it first? I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2013-34.
You're second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David. Okay, go ahead and read it.
All right. To the Door County Board of Supervisors, whereas Kita Steves died April 26, 2013, and whereas Supervisor Steves was elected to the Board of Supervisors in a recall election held February 5, 2002, representing District 8. That's your district, wasn't it, Dan?
Pardon?
It's your district, right?
That's correct.
Yes, it is. I don't get it.
I don't recall.
Anyway, District 8, City of Sturgeon Bay, wards three and four. And whereas Supervisor Steves served in office from February 14, 2002 through April 15, 2002, and whereas Supervisor Steves was appointed to the Finance Committee, Library Board, Museum Committee, Archives Committee, representative to the City of Sturgeon Bay Comprehensive Plan Committee, and ad hoc Veterans Memorial Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors assembled in regular session this 28th day of May, 2013, extend our sincere sympathy to Kita's family with this acknowledgement of her service to the citizens of the county of Door.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed unanimously. Next item is the committee appointments. The two committee appointments are, lost my place here for a second. Board of Adjustments, Eric Weber and Bob Ryan as alternate in the Long-Term Support Planning Committee, Sue DeKever. Would there be a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Dale, seconded by, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Commercial hanger lease. Charles, you wanna make the motion and explain it?
I'll make a motion to support resolution number 2013-36. It's a non-commercial hanger site lease agreement with Henry Florentini for building number 24. This is a standard lease for 10 years with a renewal option of 10 years, and the, the building was brought before the Airport and Parks Committee. Whether we are interested in purchasing it first, we decided not to, and we move forward with supporting this resolution.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dale. Are there any questions on this? This is usually pretty standard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's, has passed. The Snowmobile Trail thing that we have pulled from the agenda...
We did it last month, I believe.
Okay.
It's 2013-30.
The grant, approval for coastal management for Cane Island. Chuck, you want to explain that one? Make a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to support resolution number 2013-38.
Second.
Seconded by Biz.
Approval of the Wisconsin Coastal Management Program Grant, Cane Island Public Access and Historic Preservation Project, number AD 119502.39. And what this basically is, is a grant to support work to be done on Cane Island by the Maritime Museum and Oversight Committee in conjunction. They're looking to, I believe, put some additional buildings on the island, which, like when was a workshop, and, and to redo the oil, I can't remember what it was called, the oil...
The oil house.
Oil house. And restoration of that oil house, with a storage set situated on Cane Island. The total project cost is $160,115. The Wisconsin Coastal Management Program will supply not to exceed $36,869, and the grantee is responsible for 77% of the match, up to $123,246. Sufficient funds have been secured in the form of a Jeffries Foundation grant, $53,371, and individual donations of $69,875 to meet the financial obligations of the grant, $123,246 for the project. The Airport and Parks Committee proposed, proposed passing of this grant and moving forward, and there is no fiscal impact to the county of Door.
Okay. Are, are there any questions? Go to the voter board and vote.
You threw me on that one.
Next two. Okay?
Okay.
Go to the voter board and vote, yes or no? Does it work, Jim?
I'll try it. It's not cooperating.
That is passed on a vote of 20, yes, one absent. Next item is the pledging of county funding for support of Cane Island restoration. Go ahead.
Okay. I guess I move to support resolution number 2013-39.
Okay. You're second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David. Go ahead.
Okay. What this is, is the Jeffries Foundation has kind of challenged the Maritime Museum to come up with matching funds to exceed, I believe yours figure is 600,000, and they would, if that pledge was met by June, they would support the additional funds of $300,000 on the restoration of the Cane Island Lighthouse. I, I guess to bring into perspective here, the Cane Island Lighthouse is owned by the county of Door, with an agreement to be managed by the Maritime Museum. Over the process of the past several years, when we've taken trips out there, we've seen that there's a great need for restoration. The building and the, the structure and the lighthouse itself need quite a bit of restoration work. I believe it comes to close to a million dollars. And with this support for funding or pledge from the county of Door, we make up the difference that they need to secure the Jeffries grant of $300,000. The payback will be coming from the actual users of the island. There's approximately 35,000 to 45,000 visitors that come to the island every year, and they are charged for admittance to go onto the property. A percentage of that comes back to the county, goes into a special fund that the county of Door has, which supports nothing but Cane Island projects. So, it's not coming out of our general fund. The money we're asking for right now, I guess, is a pledge. It may not come out to be that they need 116,000. They're continuing to do their pledge work and try to bring that number down, but 116,000 from us guarantees that they will match the Jeffries fund, and it may not be needed until the year 2015, which would give us a possibility of having enough money in our Cane Island fund for the county to use very little, if any, of this pledged amount of money. Any questions?
No questions? Okay. Go to the voter board and vote yes or no. That is passed on a vote of 20, yes, and one absent. Next item is the county roads and bridges transfer, a non-budgeted item. David, you want to explain that?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2013-40, County Roads and Bridges Fund.
Seconded by John Ninus.
What this is, is accordance with county board passed resolution 2005-61, annually we review the snow removal services as to whether they are under or over budget for the year. In the year 2012, snow removal services were $36,851.3 under budget. Therefore, according with our 2005-61 resolution, we would transfer that $36,000 plus change back to the general fund. That's what this resolution proposes.
John, am I correct that next year's gonna be absolutely different, right?
We all were here for this winter.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any questions? This is for actually last year, so... Any questions? If not, we'll use the voter board again. That is passed 20, yes, with one absent.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say, please remember this for next year.
Think we'll all be here?
We hope so.
Next item is the Circuit Court Transfer Non-Budgeted Funds Upgrade/Replacement Audio/Visual System. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion that we approve resolution number 2013-41, which is the transfer of non-budgeted funds in a not-to-exceed $200,000 level to replace and upgrade the existing audio/visual systems of Branch 1 and Branch 2 of the courts.
Second.
Biz, seconded it.
Just put in.
You want to explain it a little further, or should we have Jennifer come forward?
I'll give a lead-in, then we can have Jennifer and Tim.
Okay.
Go further if you like.
Is Tim here?
Yeah.
You're on your own.
Yeah.
Yeah, why didn't you bring Tim back down?
The Finance Committee was approached to transfer some funds to upgrade, replace the audio/visual equipment currently in place at the, in the courthouses, courtrooms. Initially, the request was for upgrading all three courtrooms. The Finance Committee, at their recent meeting, approved for two courtrooms not to exceed $200,000. The current audio/visual equipment that's there is beginning to experience failures, and we're expending cost on replacing and repairing that equipment. And so, we thought that they were gonna put it in initially in the 2014 KIP, and that would be, come through as tax financing. Since we have unassigned fund balance, we determined that probably the best way to handle this now would be to go ahead and fund it and move forward with the audio/visual upgrades to prevent further expenditures due to failures that we've experienced so far. With that, I can turn it over to Jennifer. Jennifer can explain further on her side of the issue.
And Tim did, Tim did walk in. Redoing the courtrooms, it upgrades to address the failures that we've been having, but also to bring the courtrooms into compliance with Wisconsin state statutes. If you have video court, you have to do certain things that the statute sets out. So, having the two courtrooms redone would maintain the status quo, and we've seen an increase in the use of the video court over the years. This also incorporates the audio system, which you have to have microphones or hear people. We've always had people call in, Door County being the dead end that it is, sometimes it's easier for witnesses for civil and criminal matters to appear by telephone or to call in. So, the audio system is, is very important too. And as we noted at some of the committees, there is a significant savings in hard dollars to the Sheriff's Department, who would otherwise have to do the transportation for the video conferencing. Video conferencing is also used by civil court as well, not as common. The civil attorneys and litigants are usually using that AV equipment, and that works with this system as well. And that's just a summary, if there's any questions or...
Do you have any, Nan?
Me?
Yeah.
Jennifer did a great job.
Okay. Are there, has anybody got any questions? I think we, did we mention that the original request was for three, we, Finance cut it back to...
The original request was to upgrade all three rooms simultaneously, so all had the same equipment at the same time, and that came through, that was approved by IAS and forwarded up to Finance. Within Finance, there was a fairly lengthy discussion, and Finance agreed to forward two, not to exceed 200,000, to upgrade two rooms.
Okay.
The, the third hearing room's still used, and it does still need, you know, it has microphones and still needs that as well. So, we're used to having to shuffle around if we need video in there, or other, other needs for that, that room for visiting judges or for my court.
Okay. Any, Holly?
But, let's see, why not do the third one now?
With $100,000.
Well, yeah, but you're asking, this hasn't been long built and set up, has it? This is a new justice center, and now we're looking at, again, having something added on. Why not do all three of them at one time and get it done at this price instead of having it come up next year and do it whenever it comes back up again? And it's gonna be more than than it is now, isn't it?
Joel?
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Like Dave said, at IAS, this was discussed probably for twice as long as it was at the Finance Committee. And the presentation that Jennifer and, and Tim gave us that that was, was precisely that. The, both rooms right now, which were outfitted, if I'm wrong, please correct me, both of you guys, but both rooms were outfitted when the Justice Center was built, the third one never was.
Oh.
With the equipment. Is that fair, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The age of the equipment on the two of them right now is falling apart, and they are having to put money into the two of them. The recommendation from these folks at the IAS Committee was, since we're redoing two, if it would be advantageous or not to do all three, and spend the time, energy, and money now to rewire all three together, because the third one is used quite a bit when either there's a breakdown on one of the other ones, or there's just a lot of activity going on. So, Tim and Jennifer had requested it to the IAS Committee, and like Dave said, it was motioned at IAS to do three. It was at Finance where it got kind of scaled back, and rightfully so. I mean, there's, you know, justification for both arguments, but it, again, you know, being from the IAS side of it... being from the IS side of it, it, to me, it made sense to do all three of them at one time since we're going to have them there, and rightly so. Who knows what it could cost down the road to do the third one if and when it would ever need to get done? So it, that's just a what for on it.
Are there any other questions? Phil?
Just a comment that this is a, a benefit to the Sheriff's Department, because if there is, uh, has to be a transport and move, uh, go get a prisoner in another county, uh, it's either going to cause overtime, or the sheriff does, when he can, remove one of his road deputies to, to do this transfer. But when you rob Peter to pay Paul, uh, if something happens in that area where that deputy was taken, uh, it's a roll of the dice. So that, this is a benefit to the Sheriff's Department, uh, for the judges to be able to do this. Uh, and there is somewhat savings to the Sheriff's Department not having to pay overtime or a special deputy, because it takes two to go get a prisoner. Uh, and, and it, it's a benefit to the Sheriff's Department, too. So on the Facilities and Security Committee, which I'm on, uh, we didn't, we didn't know what happened this past. We knew there was the need and gave, uh, Tim the, the task to, to move it forward and ask for this money and update, and, uh, I'm in full support of it.
Any other questions? Richard?
How many courtrooms do we have?
Three.
Three. They're used all the time? I mean, like...
I guess you guys asked Jennifer that question.
The, uh, Branches One and Two are used by the judges all day, every day that they're here, and that's why they're not here. I appear for them often as the department representative, because their calendars are, are heavier than mine. I use the third courtroom as family court, which is not full-time every day, uh, all day, every day. Um, my courtroom, or the third hearing room is also used by visiting judges. Um, it's also used by the Department of Corrections when there are, um, probation and parole revocation hearings or other administrative law hearings. Most of them are Department of Corrections. So there's a number of users of that third courtroom.
Could you get, could you testify with one video?
Um, the judges' calendars, that, um, that would make it very difficult. It would be a step backwards from what we've had. Uh, they both use the, the, uh, video very regularly. Um, a lot of it is with the jail. We do our bail hearings that way, but sometimes it's to other facilities located around, around the state of Wisconsin, as we mentioned, saving on the transport cost. Um, I...
So it's going every hour of the day?
It is not, the video conferencing is not going every hour of the day. Audio is going all day, every day, but, um, telephone, we use that very regularly, and that's part of the whole package and the wiring. Um, but video, we do use every day, not all day in both courtrooms.
The proceedings and such, uh, when you're scheduling the courtroom out as far in advance as you are, that, what's really happening is we went to this presentation on the other side of the state of the new courtrooms. The courtrooms are moving into the video age, and as much video conferencing as they can handle to negate, uh, transport is where they're going. And the other is the transportation of witness and/or witnesses being able to come and testify. So what you're really doing is you're setting up your courtrooms for the future. And the Wisconsin Circuit Court is looking for enhancements in the courtroom. So you already have video conferencing? Okay? They're saying that they need a better experience as well, and that's what this upgrade is also doing for you.
Susan?
I wonder if the two of you could comment on what would need to happen now? If we don't do the third today, are we looking at that it has to be next year? I mean, what, what do you see happening in that one?
From the IS standpoint, I don't think that would happen. I mean, are, and that's also when we're doing the two courtrooms, some of what we do, they work together. So there's overlap between the two courtrooms and also what, uh, the video that goes to the jail, correct?
Right. From my standpoint, it's a redundancy issue. Um, so basically, we built the, uh, Justice Center and scheduled it out in 2004, 2014. You're getting new video gear. What's going to happen in 2024? So I have to work through those courtrooms and put this technology in, in a two-week period, probably. By the time I get done with wiring and putting in the new gear, I need to shut a courtroom down. Okay? And so you have the third room for redundancy. We recently, roughly two months ago, had a failure of half of the mics. We had to use the other courtroom because one courtroom did not work. The technology failed. It got fixed under the current maintenance contract, but it took them a week and a half to fix it. So the third courtroom was a redundancy situation and/or if you're going to start to see growth in that area. Um, and I do believe that what you're going to have happen across all of these different types of court cases is they're going to start moving to this where it's a video experience versus you having to be there in person. So it's setting up your courtrooms for the future. You also can always look at your scheduling. If your scheduling gets to that point where you're at 65% to 70% occupancy in your other two courtrooms, it's time to consider getting your other courtroom online. But that fixed fee is about $100,000 per courtroom, um, to get the wiring in there, to get the video projection in there. And the most expensive part of all of this is to get the control in there, so that the judge and/or the court reporter can actually control the courtroom. That's where the expense is.
Are there any other questions? David?
From your, from IS standpoint, is there any advantage to doing all three at the same time?
Um, you all have the same version of software and hardware at the same time. I'm not going to get some variation two years from now that's different, and I have an exception to the third courtroom that is compared to courtroom one or two. Um, so...
Would you do any, does the third courtroom need any additional audio upgrade as part of doing the other two rooms? I mean, if they're interconnected audio-wise, does that have to be done regardless if you're going to do the other?
The third courtroom will stay on its remaining old audio system in the old audio closet. Okay? And all of the gear that we're proposing is going to a new AV closet, closer to the courtrooms, actually. Um, we've asked for one of the meeting rooms over there to put all the new gear in. Again, same concept. I have to go put in the new gear in a different room, get it online and get it ready to roll. Then I got to go to a courtroom and wire it. Um, I can't do that while they're having proceedings. So is that a big major? No. We've, we support Windows XP, Windows 7, Windows whatever. We will work through that. Uh, it's, it's not a stumbling block, um, for us. We can work around it.
Well, Dale, one of the thought processes at the Finance Committee, I think it was that by the time the growth factor enters in, that it's needed, technology will have changed so much that we'll probably have to do all three at that time. Instead of having two obsolete, we'd have three obsolete, so Dale?
Yeah, I was wondering, Tim, um, maintenance agreements on these. Do you have a maintenance agreement with your systems?
On these systems that were built with the Justice Center, if you've come to the Facilities Security Meetings, you've understood, we don't have a maintenance agreement on this stuff. It all came with a building sign-off. Um, part of the reason of doing this upgrade as well is to bring that, uh, maintenance, I shouldn't say maintenance, but to bring the technical support closer to IS. In other words, Jennifer wants IS more integrally involved with any of the problems that she has versus what she's doing today. When she has a problem, she has to call an Appleton, usually gets a voicemail. They respond within four hours. But that doesn't help her in the current proceedings in the courtroom if audio or video or some projection fails. So, um, she would like to have us in the building, which we usually have somebody over there three days out of five, but, uh, she wants that technical support to be closer or integral with IS. And that is, by the way, the courtroom system, just to add, that is not the only system in the Justice Center that everybody wants IS support. So, I mean, the video system's over there, the jail system's over there, all the stuff that was built in the building, the HVAC system's over there, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All those that came with building warranties that need an electronic component are coming to us now, as they come out of warranty, or have come out of warranty.
Any other questions? Charles?
Yeah, I guess, Tim, is, is there an urgency that this be done right now versus waiting for the normal budget process, which would take place in the next couple of months?
Uh, in my limited opinion, uh, my goal is to try to get this ruled in third or fourth quarter, because that's the first I think I'll have the manpower to sit down with Jennifer and work through it.
David's got an answer to that.
I can answer part of that. That was one of the questions that we asked at IS, and Tim originally was for certain going to put in a 2014 KIP. And, uh, we just, we, IS worked with Shirley from Finance and Maureen and determined that we should try and go ahead now and get it in that this year. We could take it out of the unassigned fund balance and get it rolling into this place. If you wait till we go into 2014, it's still going to end up coming back to us again at Finance for funding and be probably funded the same mechanism unless you put it on tax roll. So that's why we chose to go ahead and do it now.
Joel?
And in the meantime, who knows when something could fail again and put the courts out of system and, you know, have unjustified expenses to repair it if we're planning on replacing it in the future anyway? That's money down the toilet. So they were all discussed at large at IS Committee, so...
Well, I guess my, my only comment on that was that maybe it would come back in a three courtroom package and we do the whole, the whole thing versus two.
Neil?
Well, I don't know. I'm going to throw it up here, but I'd like to amend the motion to do all three at the same time, not to extend $300,000.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. That's an amendment for an additional $100,000 to add to three courtrooms. Phil?
Per the fiscal impact on this resolution, then I would assume the $300,000 would come out of the, uh, the unassigned fund balance, which is, is, uh, unaudited at 21.5. My question is, would, would, would it, would that just be left alone, or would it be up to the county board to see if it goes to CIP for 2014?
If you vote on this right now and pass a $100,000 amendment and pass a $300,000 amendment, it'll be taken care of this year.
Right now. But my question is, then...
It's off the CIP.
Will it be up to the county board if they want to then move this to the CIP so it comes out of the levy?
No, it's not. Well, CIP is a future holding place. It's, it's off the CIP. It's gone.
It would be done.
Done. Over with. Terminated.
Well, I think we can afford to, to take it out of the unassigned, because we're way over our, our high limit anyway, so...
Mark?
Yeah, I, I, IS, we hashed this out over a couple of months' time period, and Shirley was the one that brought forward that we, we could, the unassigned fund could definitely handle the $300,000.
Holly, you had something to add?
I agree with Dale's motion. I think we ought to do all three of them and get them done.
Anybody else? If not, can you just wait a second here? This is where we're going to go on the real thing. The motion is made in the amendment, so the vote will be on whether to add the other courtroom an additional $100,000.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, not to exceed 300. I don't know how. Motion was to add $100,000 not to exceed 300,000.
You're going to be, you're going to be redoing the damn thing in five years anyway. Why don't you put it in the CIP where it belongs? The mere fact that the money is there doesn't do anything.
Mr. Jones?
Yes?
Just want to ask Jennifer a question. Do you feel that it's very necessary that we do the third courtroom?
Yeah. With, with what we had happen in March, we were lucky that Judge Diltz was on vacation, actually. So Judge Killers was able to move into his courtroom for the, for the whole week because of the timing of that. Um, and it gives us the opportunities in the third courtroom to do the things that we've been able to do over the years as other courtrooms, other facilities, mental health hospitals, institutions, um, corrections institutions have gotten online, some more people to communicate with. We're used to having the two. So, you know, that's the status quo. If we did the third one, there would be more opportunities there, too.
Okay. Before the vote, we want everybody to roll call back in, as you did at the beginning of the meeting. This is not the vote.
Don't ask questions.
Just say, yes, you're here, and hit the confirm.
We got to hit the present?
Yes. Hit that you're present.
Are you ready?
Oh, yeah.
You lost.
You got that.
I'm present.
This should be unanimous, except for the one absent.
Yeah.
Unless we're not sure.
He was not here.
He was not here, apparently. Oh, wait, I could change that.
It's not happening, no.
You're good. No, he, he was here. There he is. Okay. All right. I think we're ready for a talk now. We're all here.
Okay, good. No.
Okay, here we go.
Wait a second here. You did, good.
Forty-one.
Forty-two.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Right, we're on forty-one, yes.
Can we still, uh, speak on the amendment?
Sure can.
I have some of the, uh, concerns that I had at Admin, and, uh, I'm much more inclined to be with Mr. Haynes on the, uh, reducing this to a one courtroom addition only. To go to all three at this time, I think, uh, technology is going to pass us up, we're going to be back to looking for more money. The mere fact that this came to us so quickly, had a $2,000 drop, and suddenly we were able to find money in a different account, does not sit very well with me, nor would it sit well with the public if they knew that we were venturing out into a new area for, uh, the convenience of two judges, and I doubt very much if either one of them are having a video conference at the same time. Now, I think if there happens to be a situation where someone needs to be arraigned for a bail and/or some other situation in another county, that, that any one of our judges could physically pick himself up from his seat, his throne, and go to another room to effect that hearing and/or bond. Why would you have to have one in each one of the rooms when I doubt very much that, uh, both courtrooms are in session at the same time? Although I've been away from the courtrooms for some while, I'll probably wind up there tomorrow. But anyways, uh, the biggest problem that I, I do have with it is, I was in the court system here when we had one judge, and then we went to a second judge. And I, I can say that I very seldom saw the need, or did I ever visit, visually see both courtrooms in session at the same time, unless it was a trial that took on for a long time, and then they had to have a hearing or a quick bail bond, whatever the situation. I'm just saying, regardless of where this money is coming from, folks, does not mean we go out and spend it. We have a couple of roadblocks here. Number one, technology. How long ago did we build that Justice Center and reprogram the whole thing? And now we're going to go back and try to retrofit something that's probably going to hit a bubble or a bump in the road down the road five mile, uh, five, uh, years. I just don't see it, and, uh, I'll just remind everybody, it takes two-thirds of this board, um, to fund this program. And I, I've said before, I think it's something that belongs to the CIP. The mere fact that it's a want versus a need, and we'd want to do it now, does not come along to justify, uh, the passage of this resolution.
Anybody else? John?
I would also like to accept the decision of the Finance Committee. There's, there's a lot of things in this county that would be nice to do right now, because eventually we're going to have to do them. But we have to do what's necessary and what's not nice, always nice. I don't believe we can do everything right now. I believe we have to space some things out over a period of time.
Okay.
I'll, I, I, I'll go with the Finance Committee's recommendation here.
Anybody else? Phil?
Just another comment on, and Tim can correct me if I'm wrong. We sent employees to, to, uh, other counties, you know, to look at their equipment, and other counties have been updating with the, with the modern equipment. And, uh, you know, as Leo is stating, and he's right, the technology keeps changing. You know, five years from now, maybe this would be outdated. But if you're going to keep up with the other counties, you know, you need to do it. But the, the other thing you need to know is that you put in a brand-new system, there's maintenance to it. But we, we were told... But we, we were told at the Facility and Security meeting that these numbers would be high enough to include an estimated $5,000 a year for the maintenance, that there would be enough money after the system is in to cover the maintenance. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
So, so what I'm saying is there isn't some more extra cost, that this, this should be enough money. What the Finance approved was the two courtrooms, the two main courtrooms, and I, I guess I wouldn't be in favor of the judges switching back and forth to ju, to one courtroom that has it. I think the need is there for sure for the two courtroom.
The issue here right now, Bill, is not whether one, it's issue of two or three.
Well, I know that. And I'm saying how important it is of the, of the original, what the Finance said was the two courtrooms.
Correct. Anybody? Richard?
Jennifer said something about the state requirement. What is the state requirement that we have to do?
If you have video court, and you're not required to have video court, if you have video court, there are certain guidelines, excuse me, not guidelines, requirements of how the video projection has to look. If you have a, an inmate somewhere else, what they see on the screen, what they can see on the screen, and it's supposed to replicate being in the courtroom. And our current system doesn't do that. A lot of people opt to, don't object to that, because it is better than being put in chains and hauled sometimes, but some inmates like the ride. So, we haven't had that problem, that they've been objecting to that, to be there in person when we can do video.
Yeah.
I think at Finance, we discussed one, two, and three, and two was sort of a compromise for redundancy and good in case one broke down. Finance Committee, I think it was unanimous, kind of agreed that three was too many and two was enough. Correct?
Correct. After the discussion at Finance, yes. I don't know that was unanimous. It was not unanimous.
I don't, I don't believe it was unanimous.
Okay. So, anybody else? Otherwise, we'll go to the voter board, and this is a vote to increase it from two courtrooms to three courtrooms for an additional $100,000. Vote yes or no? This will be, and it's gotta take two thirds, by the way.
No.
This is a majority. This is amendment, this takes, okay. This is fail. Seven yes, thirteen no. Now, if there are any more questions, as soon as she's got it, program will go to the vote for the amendment, the resolution as it stands. So, we win. Ready?
Would you repeat the resolution that's gonna be defeated now?
Whatever. It's for two courtrooms for $200,000.
What are we voting on now?
Pardon?
What are we voting on now?
It's for the original, for two courtrooms for $200,000.
The resolution as...
As presented.
Forwarded by Finance.
As presented.
The one that's in the Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. All right, we're not against...
You got a question or not?
I was gonna make a comment.
Well, go ahead. We've got one...
One of the, one of the things that wasn't mentioned in all this discussion is the fact that in the procedure of transportation of prisoners, prisoners have escaped.
Okay.
You've got a dangerous felon that could stay in a secured facility during a trial. That just happened recently in a county a couple of months ago, where somebody was being transported and got loose. Now, you gotta round them up. This is, besides the money savings of the transport, there's a whole nother aspect to it.
Any other questions? If not, Richard?
But that doesn't mean that they, they're not gonna be transferred ever.
No.
Well, that's true. Yeah, that's correct. So, they're not gonna be...
So, go to the voter board and vote yes for the resolution as it now stands, or no? This takes two-thirds, by the way. And two-thirds is fourteen, or?
How many votes you got?
Grant, is two-thirds fourteen when one's missing?
Yeah, the entire, the entire membership.
It passed sixteen, yes, four, no, one absent. What is the ruling on that? Would it have been fourteen or thirteen?
Total membership, so it would be fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. It passed fourteen, six, right? Okay. Sixteen to four.
Go ahead.
There's no new business, oral committee reports? If there are none, anybody got any questions on the minutes? They're wore out, I think. Any review of the vouchers and the claims and bills? Wow. Uh, WCA Conference, we got a, you got a letter in your pack or on your desk today. You gotta see Jill to make your reservations. Number two, I'm supposed to say loud and clear, payroll is gonna be delayed by two weeks?
Right. We're in a payroll week this week, and cutoff is 10:00 AM this morning. We aren't going to make cutoff to be paid Friday, so you're gonna be two weeks from Friday before you get paid.
And next meeting is June 25th, nine o'clock here. Motion to adjourn. Leo?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Leo's got a comment.
I have an announcement. The Insurance Committee is meeting Thursday at one o'clock. We're gonna have all the experts of the state and county in this room, and we anticipate there might be a whole bunch of townspeople here who support the EMT and EMR program and wanna know more about the workers' compensation. So, come early, so you get a seat. Thursday at one o'clock.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
It was made and seconded.
Was it?
Brandon.
Brandon, will you? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.